I don't want to be, I don't want to.
I don't, I have.
I don't know who you are.
What's wrong with?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. Before I call the meeting to order tonight, I would like to say something very briefly. The purpose of this and every city commission meeting is to conduct, to conduct city business. You all have the opportunity to speak if you so choose. However, interruptions, speaking over others, personal attacks, profanity, outbursts, or any other form of disruptive behavior from anyone in the chamber this evening will not be tolerated. And I'll ask to have you removed from the premises. I appreciate your attendance and I hope you'll participate in a respectful manner. At this time, I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It is Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is seven o'clock. And we have, oh, and tonight, we have a recognition. Uh, the city commission would like to recognize Mike Baker, Director of Public Services for his twenty years of service to the city of Buchanan. Thank you. Do we have roll call, please?
Denison.
Here.
Weeden.
Here.
Janski.
Yep.
Money.
Present.
Swem.
Present.
You're on the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to remove the closed session meeting under scheduled matters from the floor.
I'll make said motion.
I'd like to know why. Since this agenda was released, uh, this commission has received a memo from the city attorney. And, uh, no action was going to be taken in the closed session this evening anyway. Um, so at this time, I, I don't see the, the point of paying the city attorney to sit through this meeting. Um, we're still awaiting some interviews to be finished and. I'd like to make a motion behind your motion. I know there's a motion on the floor. Do we have roll call for the motion that's?
Oh, my motion, I need it. Okay, either way.
Denison motion, Swem supportive. Weeden?
No, I, Mark's supportive.
Mark supportive? Weeden?
Yes.
Janski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yeah.
Denison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion. That we fired city attorney immediately. Cause there's court. Asking if there's some work for the motion on the floor to fire the city attorney. Hearing that motion. Can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Shunel makes said motion.
This is money, I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Janski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yeah.
Denison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, if you'd like to make a public comment on an agenda item only, please make your way to the podium and state your name to the desk.
Uh, it's not on the agenda, but you can say it afterwards if you like. At the last three minutes? Oh, yes.
Mr. Ryman, Mr. Ryman, Mr. Ryman. Does this concern the agenda?
Is this, is this concerning something that's on the, the agenda?
Yeah, it, it, it concerns the closed session.
Well, it was just removed from the agenda. So you could save your comments for the public opinion or public comments at the end of the meeting?
You're not gonna let me make my comments now?
On non-agenda, on non-agenda items, you may make your comments.
No, this is on the agenda.
We just removed it, Mr. Ryman. We won't be going into closed session. Is this concerning something that's on the, the agenda?
Yeah, it, it, it concerns the closed session.
Well, it was just removed from the agenda. So you could save your comments for the public opinion or public comments at the end of the meeting?
You're not gonna let me make my comments now?
On non-agenda, on non-agenda items, you may make your comments.
No, this is on the agenda.
We just removed it, Mr. Ryman. We won't be going into closed session. We just removed it prior to the public comment. You can, you can speak at the end on non-agenda items.
No, you won't let me speak now. I'm, I'm halfway through my comments. Why don't I, why don't you let me finish them?
They're not concerning that agenda item at this point.
No point of order, Your Honor. You've allowed this to go on before for other items on your selections of who you allow to speak and who you don't allow to speak. You're not really good at conducting meetings anyhow, so I'd like to let the gentleman that's ninety-six-year-old.
And that's a matter of.
I'd like to see him finish his comment. He don't want to let anybody else speak, but he's ninety-six.
Good.
That's right.
You can finish your comments.
So I'm making, uh, okay. Firing the city manager costs the city the amount of its contract when we still owe money on the settlement of a previous city manager. There's a beautiful new water and sewer facility slated to serve fifteen thousand people when we only have forty-four hundred served by the joint water sewer board. The Buchanan Zoo cannot afford to pay for this facility. Further, it has never been approved by a loadless citizen as required by the Headway Act. Elbridge has required, Elbridge has required all city employees, including city manager, to control, to control their paid time by time clock. Economic Development Director refuses to put his paid time on the time clock. Who gets suspended for failure to comply with substantial money-saving move? Not the Economic Development Director, the city manager who complied is a slender. The city of Buchanan, which is moving into bankruptcy, gets penalized for valid steps to save money. What is behind this? In my opinion, is a wish to attract Chicago businesses into a going bankrupt city. It is crazy.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comments?
Non-agenda items.
I understand.
No, this is on, this is actually on an agenda item.
This is an agenda item.
Agenda, agenda items.
Sorry.
Mayor Monroe, Lamey, uh, from one each of our parkways. Who joins us at these meetings? Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and will be done in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, if it is within our love, and trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thy name is kingdom, the Father, and the glory forever. Amen. This has everything to do with our agenda, because we should have God in your hearts and your spirit, you got that, ladies and gentlemen, or gentlemen shall say. My, um, my request tonight is for Mayor Sean Denison to resign today. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Anyone else wishing to make a public comment on an agenda item? Okay, staying there. Moving down to the consent agenda. Make the motion to approve the consent.
I'm going to approve that consent, consent agenda is presented.
Thank you. There's court?
I'll support.
Roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Janski?
Yes.
Okay, moving down to scheduled matters from the floor. Lake Michigan Steamworks, Mr. Phil Place, President of Mega Hertz Robotics, uh, lead mentor. Please.
Other than my technically bad timing.
You're gonna get more attention now.
Uh, okay, so, uh.
No, he's just talking.
Everybody? Uh, I am the lead mentor for Mega Hertz Robotics, the high school robotics team, which I'm sure all of you have heard of. If you haven't, just nod, say yes. Uh, we are a part of Lake Michigan Steamworks, which is a larger non-for-profit organization that fundraises for STEAM initiatives. Science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And we do that through our robotics programs. What we're here for today is to get a designation from the city as a charitable organization that then allows us to do, uh, quote unquote, like to call it gambling. But it's, it's, it's charity raffles within the city limits. Uh, so we would love your support in, in doing that.
Anybody question?
Do you have an upcoming event?
No, but the process is long, so we're preparing ourselves for our next fundraiser. Um, our robotics season itself starts in January, the competition's in March.
So I'm going to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-three dot eleven slash thirty.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
This is money, I'll support.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Swem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Janski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Moving down to reports by departments, committees, and boards starting with the Friends of the McCoy Creek Trail, Mr. Jared Flotter.
Well, like Phil, I'm so glad so many people are interested in the trail. We, we make an annual report to let the city commission know that we are a, an active group. We get a lot of things done without the city having to pay for us. I know it makes a smile up there, so that's been a good thing for the last four or five years. Um, recently, the, I don't know what you want to call it, the, um, people that go around and destroy things in our town decided they were gonna go to the baiting mill. And they did. They draw out a bunch of fencing that leads for safety, so people don't go down into the, to the, uh, area down there. And it cost us nine hundred and fifty-four dollars to get that repaired, which we did. So that's a good thing. Um, they used to go down to the baiting mill and cook and kick out the wooden slats with the help of Mike Baker and his crew. Um, we decided that the DPW was doing so much work down there and we were spending so much money on wood slats that we put in rebar. So if they go down there to kick out slats now, hopefully they're walking around town with a broken toe, so the police department can get them. Uh, one of the other things that we did this year, we got six American chestnut trees from Tom Rassie of Niles. Uh, Cole Martin and his family have agreed to take over the American chestnut trees and the maintenance of them. We now have eighteen of them on the trail. We get about six every year and, um, that population continues to grow. However, the drought last summer took out four of them, so we only really had, um, two that were additional this year. Um, trick or treat. We just had trick or treat on the trail. Um, thanks to the Clark Lab for letting us use their parking lot and, um, uh, the automation, um. Edgewater, Edgewater automation allowed us to park there. Uh, we had nine hundred and one kids go through the trail. And seven hundred and thirty-one adults. The, um, the McCoy Creek Trail Committee went out and raised about fourteen hundred dollars. Plus the wonderful scarecrow ladies gave us two hundred and fifty dollars worth of candy. So all in all, we had, um, about sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars in candy that, uh, that we did give out. We had two good-sized, um, buckets left. We gave one to the fire department and we gave one to Catherine Park to give out for, um, trick or treat that night. And then the last thing that we, um, are in the process of doing. So, um, a lot of people know that the trail exists. Not many people, as, as you talk to people who walk the trail, know that there's a east side and a west side. Um, so we're trying to fix that. The big area that where we tend to lose people is downtown. So we went through with a committee and, um, Edgewater is going to make these, they're gonna donate these to the, to our trail. And, um, we're gonna have arrows, as you can see. Uh, the one that's not on here kind of wraps around if we're gonna go in two different areas, so. Um, but, um, that's all being donated, uh, by Edgewater. So we're gonna walk the trail tomorrow, make sure that we're a hundred percent compliant. And then I think next spring, um, the DPW will assist us in placing the signage. Um, the other thing that I think hopefully a lot of people know is that we are gonna be extending the trail. Uh, we just got another grant, a sixty-three thousand dollar grant, which puts us at a hundred percent funding that we need and that should, we should start building that when the, um, when the weather breaks next spring.
Yeah, Jerry, I wanted to, um, it's not really a question. AT&amp;T has been contacted for fiber optics downtown.
Yeah.
It's two weeks into it already. So, um, the locals don't do it. I talked to them today. It has to go through a government agency, part of AT&amp;T. So it's gonna be a month out, but we may be able to start putting cameras in some of these places, but we're having problems.
That would be wonderful.
You know, the fiber optics, you know, we're gonna save about thirty percent. And Ben did that two weeks ago because I switched to AT&amp;T.
Right.
And it's a thirty-five percent discount for what I was getting. And I'm getting the same TV, the same, the internet at twelve hundred megahertz instead of three hundred. So Ben did that, the local rep ran with it and he had to contact, they took it away from the biggest account AT&amp;T in this area's head for four years. And they took it away from him and gave it to some guy in Indianapolis. So it'll be two or three weeks out before we know it, but that is definitely something that we need to look into because we need cameras around town.
We, we do need cameras around town. We have a number of areas that, um, again, that wonderful group of people that like to go around destroying stuff for some reason. It's not only the trail. I know there are other things in town, but, um, the trail seems to be one of their ongoing places where they like to be seen and stuff. All right?
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, moving down to Buchanan Tree Friends with Chair Brian Murphy.
Thank you. Great to see you all. Great to have an audience. As you know, the Tree Friends, our mission is. As you know, the Tree Friends, our mission is threefold. Advocacy, conservation, and education. Advocacy is we are an all-volunteer group that advocates for trees to the city. We educate citizens on the value of trees. So I'm glad you're all here to learn about how great trees are. We, um, we also do conservation, which is most of what we do. Most of what you know we do is planting trees. This fall, we did not have a mass planting. We did do some planting, we planted about a dozen trees. There was a death in the community this fall. Jason Leets, who was the Chairman of the Plant Commission, and Lou Flowers, in his, in his passing, he asked that gifts be made to Buchanan Tree Friends. We received thousands of dollars and we planted trees on his behalf. Some this fall, some species that they requested are not going to be available till the spring. Education. We've been working with the schools. The mayor came with us to the middle school this fall, this spring, and we, uh, we did our birthday there. So we're working with the schools. We also, again, working with citizens here. Buchanan is a tree city, USA. They say that one, there was a day in Buchanan where a squirrel could get into the tree canopy of one side of town and not get onto the street all the way across the town. That's not the case now. Our tree canopy is 36% of the area of the city. The minimum benchmark that people like to see is 40. So education, we're working. In this, uh, this fall, a group of Girl Scouts raised $500 and we planted two trees at schools here in town. So that's in some evidence of the work that we're doing. Many of you wouldn't know this, but we passed a resolution as the Tree Friends last October, a year ago. Because of turnover in the city government, we weren't able to present it to the commission until August. The resolution called for the, uh, the city commission and the city manager to initiate the beginnings of a tree plan. We've had an inventory done of all the trees in the city. We've also had a tree canopy assessment that was done. The city urged the city manager. We've had two very productive meetings in the last two months with the city manager and are very encouraging to have those meetings. And we look forward to having further meetings. We had a great communication today with Mike Baker about a specific incident in the city with regard to a tree that needs to be taken out. And we need, as a city, to do better with our processes so that they're transparent, that they're understood, and then we do everything we can to protect the tree canopy. So in, um, as we were going about the tree plan, there's a dilemma we have in the city. We have far greater needs than we have resources. We can all agree on that, right?
Yes.
Everybody agrees we have far more needs than we have resources. So how are we going to make this happen? We're going to love each other, we're going to be kind to each other. That's what trees tell us. Trees tell us, stand there, be solid, be kind. So, I got off track here. Anyway, more needs, there are more needs than resources. That's my point. More needs than resources, which is, which is frustrating because the trees, we need to do the work now. And we also encouraged to the city manager that we have this tree inventory and it's critical that we maintain the tree inventory. In the process of these meetings, we learned of a grant opportunity from the Department of Natural Resources. So we investigated this. I actually spoke to the man in Lansing, um, who's in charge of urban forestry. I told him about our struggles with the inventory. He said, "Not good news." He said, "We, if you are not using that tree plant, that tree inventory to identify your planting and to understand the nature of your urban forest, we will not grant you money." Fortunately, all the new trees that have been planted by us have been put into the inventory. Any trees that have been removed or maintained, we have a backlog now that we need to maintain. And there's nobody in the city to do it because it's not on anybody's job description and we don't have the resources to pay the person. So the inventory was not a snapshot of time. It's an organic inventory that needs to be maintained. So we found out this granted opportunity and I'm looking for the grant and they're going to help, they're offering to pay for things like planning. I've asked them to offer, to pay for training of city personnel in the tree inventory software. We've asked for a year, another year of subscription for the treekeeper software, which is $2,500. So we've asked for two grants. A $12,750 grant, which will include training and planning assistance as well as that $2,500 for one more year of the tree inventory software and $5,000 to put in Mike's pocket so he can go out and do more tree maintenance. And we want to incentivize the city to take in more too, if we can get the DNR to come through. They've also told us that there will be more money in the coming years because this is part of the Inflation Reduction Act that these funds are available. The Inflation Reduction Act prioritizes disadvantaged cities. Buchanan is a disadvantaged city. We're a disadvantaged city in the criteria, two criteria. One is, let me read this, the percentage of household income, which is less than or equal to twice the federal poverty, poverty level is in the 72nd percentile of the country. So we meet a poverty threshold in the city. Second, we have, we have two super funds in this site, in the city. So proximity to super funds. If you combine those two components, poverty and proximity to super funds, we are a disadvantaged community. What that means is that these grants will not have to be matched. That's great news. And for the next five years, they will have grants. And they like us. They like Buchanan, they like what we're doing. So if we keep doing this, we'll get some momentum. The tree canopy assessment, which we also have happened, you know, '82 it seemed like she was tired when that happened. Six cities in the, in the St. Joe River Valley were assessed their tree canopies. I don't remember them all, Syracuse, Indiana, Casopolis, uh, Scurgis, Middlebury, Indiana, six cities. We have the best tree canopy, 36%. These other cities were in the 20s. So we're okay. But we learned and we have satellite maps that show where the opportunities for including our tree canopy. And the main area or main opportunity is right here, where Clark used to be, these brownfields out here. So I'm on a personal mission to understand these, and I understand I should be talking to you there because we want to understand these restrictive covenants that are prohibiting us from planting in these because we understand from the man in Lansing that phyto remediation, which is, I learned the word, phyto remediation, is using trees to remediate the toxins in our soil. So if we do phyto remediation, we could really improve our tree canopy over the next 30 years and make the city more beautiful. I'll never see the results of this. I'm 65 years old. When I'm dead, the children of this town who will be doing these jobs, all of our jobs, they're going to be the ones that enjoy these trees. But we can do something great. You know, what's the best day to plant a tree? Today or 30 years ago? So, um, brownfields. I need some help because, you know, it's not my expertise. But, um, do you have any questions?
We've been working on a brownfield for three years. The contacts are there. The brownfield got sold. ElectroBoys owns the brownfield now, or ElectroBoys is the owner.
There are dozens of brownfields. There's dozens of restrictive covenants.
Well, with the restricted covenants, there's a lawyer out there that's been working on that for a year.
Because that's, that's a super fund segment.
The super fund, right.
Super fund, and there's a super fund over here.
Right.
And then there are brownfields all throughout here.
So the restricted covenants that you're talking about, are you talking about?
I'm talking right along Third Street, all the way out.
Okay.
And we'll improve the McCoy Creek Trail.
Okay.
We're going to provide shade down there.
Okay.
All, you know, we know that they were able to put in Red Bud Fitness because they did stuff, I don't know. Again, people know more than I do and I don't want to get into the territory of, I don't know. But I do know that we'd like to plant, we'd like to plant a lot of trees. And I think if we can plant in brownfields and with our disadvantaged community and with our connections in Lansing and with a great tree plan, hopefully we're going to get that funded. Even if we don't get it funded though, we're still going to work on a tree plan. Mike wants to work on it, city manager wants to work on it. So we're going to make that happen. We're volunteers, but, you know, as you know, we're passionate about what we do. But we know that the city has limited resources. So we know we can't do everything, but what's possible? We don't want the perfect to get in the way of the possible.
We've been talking about it because Patrick asked me a year before I got elected this time to be on the Brownfield Committee. And I have talked to Chicago and I've talked to the local. It's just that we got to have the organizational skills down here at City Hall to put a committee together.
Brian, I can help you on those restrictive covenants. Thank you. Let's get this done.
Thank you.
Next item is community development report for the Director of Community Development, Rich Murphy, and Assistant Community Development Director, Ashley Regal.
Thanks, Mayor Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. I have an update on two important redevelopment projects in Buchanan. First one is the old mill, old feed mill and road, the entire shop update. You guys remember over the last several months we've been working with an environmental consultant, Point Blue, in particular Shay Muller, who's here this evening, and Mark Seaman. And our goal is to prepare the city-owned sites of the 111 railroad, the 708 South Red Bud, to be redevelopment-right. That's what we're trying to do. Properties are controlled by the city. Point Blue, uh, we are under contract with them. They did outline a plan for environmental remediation, which we have activated. They also created the specifications for the demolition. You remember that we went out to bid for demolition of the old feed mill. We did secure a low bid in hand from Gentry Devolution. Also, as you know, but to remind the public, on a parallel track, we've been working with Marion County on a path to a grant through the state land. So this is a, the county actually has to be the applicant, but we're a team, so we're partnering with the county. We submitted our grant for the first round, we're not funded, but we are strengthening our application now and we're going to submit in December. Additionally, Point Blue secured an addendum with the demolition contractor to honor the original bid that we had in hand plus some nominal increases in cost. So, um, I asked Shay Muller to be here this evening. Maybe to give just a brief update on the project.
Thank you.
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 But I don't think we need to hit pause on applying for free, a free $380,000 in money.
Oh, I'm not hitting.
Especially when we've done all the work the right way on the upfront to make it a competitive opportunity for funding. We just don't have somebody in line to develop it yet.
I would add, we are constantly touring that site with developers. In fact, uh...
What are their names?
Ashley and I just toured the site with a developer named Mark Falanga.
Can you send me that contact information?
That was yesterday or the day before. And so, or last week. And so, uh, we are constantly looking at different ways to skin the cat. Uh, we see this, you know, we didn't succeed on the first grant. We're retooling. We're going to come up with a more compelling, uh, grant application and that's how we do it, so.
Patrick, I don't disagree with you on this, on most points, but we haven't approached it, which we do all the time. We go in one straight way and we don't do anything else and we don't veer off from it at all. And we could have been going at this from three different directions. And we could have been going at this from three different directions. We had the opportunity to tear part of it down, and we didn't.
I think, I think when you look at it from that perspective, it probably puts the rest of it in jeopardy, especially considering a large portion of that redevelopment zone is covered under insurance policy from the Streffling oil spillback, however many decades ago that was.
Okay.
When you're dealing with environmentally sensitive property, it takes longer, it's more tenuous, but there's a right way to do it. And if you take, if you take shortcuts, you put everything else in jeopardy typically, especially when sites that are near Brownfield. I'm just speaking from experience. This checks every box that banks hate. Next to a railroad, former gas station, underground tanks, definition of spills. All that's in this spot, asbestos. I mean, it's, it's something that most of the time is considered unfinanceable. So the fact that the city's approaching it in the way they can to get it remediated puts a developer in a position to succeed, unlike what they would deal with if they just took it in now.
So we really need a Brownfield committee?
No, I think we've hired counsel that is taking us down the right path right now with what we have. I think a committee only will help our other Brownfield properties, and establishing that will help with a recapture if we ever decide to do that. But right now, probably our most advantageous tool is getting the grant to get the site cleaned up, probably some abatement down the road if there's a worthy project. But I think we're, we're going down the right direction. The only thing that makes it, would make it better, is if we had somebody chomping at the bit to build something out of right now, which we're trying to entice them with a clean site at this point. And until we have that, it's going to be that much more difficult to win the bid. So I, I approve of the way we're handling it. I think we need to keep the foot on the gas on it, keep submitting until they're tired of seeing it.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, second update is on the Ross Sanders house. We have been working hard on action steps since our last update. This is pertaining to the sale of the Ross Sanders house. I'm happy to report, we have finalized the creation of the new parcel for sale, which appears to be acceptable to all parties. We have a purchase agreement being finalized for the sale of the property between the city and Michigan Gateway Community Foundation. That's in draft right now. We have begun the process. The process has begun with State Shippo to draft the preservation easement. There have been, a contact was identified. They, I believe Michael has been in touch with them to start that conversation about the preservation easement that would provide requirements for the way that the property would need to be rehabilitated per standards, historic guidelines. So we're in full gear, moving to finalize the tour. I know I was at Michigan Gateway's annual meeting where they highlighted this event this potential purchase of the property at this meeting, so I know the board's excited about it. The city's doing everything we need to, to move the, the deal forward. And I know Michael Rowland is here this evening. I don't know if you want to make a few comments on, from your perspective?
Yeah, well, hello commissioners and hello crowd. You know, I want to give you a quick update, and I'll be very brief. But I do, I'd be remiss if I didn't notice that there's quite a crowd in here, and I know that many people came here either angry or upset or wanting answers, and that's fair. And I hope you get those answers. I hope you understand that. But I would be also remiss if I didn't say how happy I am that you're getting tossed here the good of this town. That you're seeing the friends in the Coy Creek Trail. You're seeing the tree friends. You're seeing Lake Michigan Steamworks. You're seeing the needs that our nonprofit community has and the good work that's being done here. It's not all dark. It's not all bad. And the news that you hear on social media is just part of the story. We have a thriving community, a community of caring compassionate people. And I hope everyone in this room takes the opportunity to listen to these stories and say, how can I help? You know, if, if you're this engaged to be here tonight, are you this engaged to help Michigan Steamwor-, Lake Michigan Steamworks get to their next event? Are you this engaged to donate your time to the tree friends to plant some trees in our community? I hope you are. But to get to the, the community foundation's work with Ross Sanders, I wanted to update you in the status. Rich has done a tremendous job with keeping this process rolling around. There's a lot of moving parts in this, both through the state, through Michigan Historic Preservation Network, through Shippo, through our interaction with the city. We've been working on this for over two years, and this work could not continue without the dedicated work of the people here at the city, including Rich, who has done just a tremendous job. So, so far, we have a preliminary scope of work. We finalized our use license language for the fire department, which is important for the community to know, that the two accesses for the fire department will continue to be there. There will be a use license for those folks as long as the fire department is in that location. We, those are our friends and, and needed for our community and our personal safety. So we'll do everything as a community foundation to make sure that they have everything they need to be successful as well. We've submitted our application to Michigan Historic Preservation Network, who is the sub-organization of Shippo that does all the historic preservations for the state of Michigan, that has been approved by their board and their attorney is in the process of working with our council to draft not only the agreed-upon easement language, but also the purchase agreement for final review by all of you in the, in the commission. In addition to that, we will review that with Buchanan Preservation Society, our good friends. I see Peter and Emery in here as well. We'll make sure that this is something, for those that aren't familiar with the historic preservation easement, it's a, essentially makes it so no one can ever do anything with Ross Sanders except keep it Ross Sanders for the rest of time. So even if Michigan Gateway Community Foundation isn't there, Ross Sanders will live in Buchanan in perpetuity. I'd also like to get permission from the city council to have open access to the building at this point. With so many moving parts, we have contractors and upcoming inspections from Michigan Historic Preservation Network. That would be helpful to have continued access when needed. You guys have been great about whenever we needed access to make sure we have it. But we are kind of at that stage in the game where I could get a call and I need to be there in 15 minutes to meet a contractor, or there's someone there from Shippo coming down that day, and I need to be able to do that. So obviously, I know how to access it, but it's a city-owned building, and, and I feel strongly that I need your permission to be able to access it unfettered like that.
What are you wanting to do in it? It's not your building yet.
So we need to have contractors come in and actually look at the work that needs to be done. You know, we've had contractors in many times to get our original scope of work done. But as the process gets closer, one, they have to relook at everything. Honestly, during the process of all this, how long it's taken, there's been a lot of damage that's also happened to the building too, that weren't in the original scope of work. So as these folks, we look to get competitive bids and make sure that we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we have all the information necessary on how to complete this in the fastest, most cost-effective way. We'll need to have them come back in. That process, I can tell you from my building here downtown, and I'm sure Patrick could tell you from commercial lending, it's, those things are constantly moving, constantly changing. And, you know, I could have one day a plumber say, you know, I need to go back in there because I need to measure all the pipes that I need. You know, we gave you a quote originally, but if I'm going to order something, I need to know exactly what that amount is. So all of those things.
Patrick, you're the banker. As a real estate agent, you know, until the deed's in the property owner's name, you really don't, I mean, you're not doing anything to the building, are you?
No.
You're not doing anything to the building at all.
Uh-uh.
So.
I think it's a matter of trust. You know, we've already entered an agreement on sale. The building is vacant today. Not being used, and only, as we hear, potentially getting worse. I don't think there's a reason to hold up.
How long, what's the timeline on getting, so the deed's in your name?
Right, so that's really all on the timeline of Shippo. I mean, if, if the historic preservation easement wasn't part of this process, we could close this week. Well, as long as it took for the title work to be completed. But that process with Shippo, you know, they told us originally 60 to 90 days, but I can tell you with utmost certainty, because the treasurer of Cass County is on our board for Cass, and they're doing the same process with the, with the city hall in Cassopolis and the courthouse, that, you know, they've been working on this, and it's been four months, and they haven't finalized it. In their scenario, they've already started construction, everything like that. We have been approved by their board. So right now, we are at the stage where our attorneys are doing their thing, and as you know, attorneys, you know, take their time and redline things quite a bit and make sure everything's the correct way. And I believe in that frankly, and I think the community should believe in the fact that this easement should look and be treated with Ross Sanders' house as the priority, not what's best for anybody but Ross Sanders' house.
Have you drained the building? Has the building been drained?
No, the, right now, the building is still operational. The heat's on, and you know, everything is, is operational in the building.
So shouldn't we turn that off? I mean.
Probably not a great idea.
No.
Now, wait, wait a minute. Let me ask.
Yeah, no, it's a fair.
I mean, there's abandoned houses everywhere. They blow the water lines out, they flush the toilets, they clean the toilets up, and you eliminate the power.
I mean, that's true.
We will also probably need some of that when we, you know, if we have someone come in and they're doing some kind of work to test something, or, you know, they need to be able to run their equipment.
You said you weren't doing any work in the building.
Well, they're going to have to test and, and, you know, do, there's things where they may need to run equipment to do whatever work is necessary to get the information they need.
See if the existing boiler's working. If you winterize the existing boiler, then somebody's got to come in and restart it all. I mean, what a mad. Would it make you feel better if we like put a sign and log down there? That way, we know who's coming in now.
Yeah.
Harvey, do we have a camera on that area by chance? We don't have one.
Preservation Society put a camera in there several years.
I just know we have cameras around town. I don't know if that's.
I don't think there's a camera in there.
To me, it's a big element of trust. We've already entered into a purchase agreement.
It's not a trust issue I'm asking you for.
Hang on.
Please.
I don't think any of those cameras are operational. What the hell are they doing up there?
Ryan.
Sir.
Sir.
I'm not, I'm not questioning the trust.
And if you guys don't want us in there, it's, it's a moot, it's a moot point.
That's not what I'm doing here at all, Michael. I'm asking the question.
Sometimes it sure sounds that way, and that's why we can't get rid of property in the town, because somebody wants to sit here on this commission and act like that.
Because we're asking questions?
Michael Rowland is doing, what questions he asking?
So, so let's, let's talk about money. This is something that the city has done really well at. This is something that is costing the taxpayer no dollars. Give me the utilities. Sign over the utilities to the, to Michigan Gateway Community Foundation.
I really hate having the finger pointed at me for asking questions that be, should be asked by everybody all the time on everything.
I know, but you asked what it is. So do you want me to pay for it? Do you want me to pay for it?
Michael, it's not a matter of trust.
Do you want me to pay for it? I'm not, and I'm not saying this decision's.
That's not what I'm asking.
I'm going to interrupt here because we're, we're way off course. This was an update on the sale.
So, that's the update.
Do we need, do we need a motion to move on that, Kelly?
Yeah, I would make a motion.
I would, I would, I would like to take a motion that would allow the Gateway Community Foundation access to the building to let contractors in to work on their scope of work quotes and.
Sean will make said motion.
Is there support?
This is money I'll support.
Can we roll call?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Gianski?
I'm going to vote no.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, so for the next item, consider resolution 2023.11/31, allowing Rich Murphy to sign on behalf of the city of Buchanan for the sale of 123 Days Avenue. I would accept the motion.
I'm moved to approve resolution 2023.11/31 as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Gianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to number four, an update on the business incubator, 101 Days Avenue.
Good evening. I'm Ashley Regal, and I just wanted to give a brief update about our progress with the business incubator on 101 Days. And we actually have one of our vendors here tonight. We have four new businesses going in town, and it's on the corner of Days and Front Street, and we're so excited to welcome them. They started moving in this last week. This process started in February, and it's been only because of the generosity of the Rowland Property Group to allow us to follow this vision and this dream from the support of the city for supporting us and going this direction. It's been because Honor has believed in our mission and partnered with us, and the Fred Upton Foundation also supported our mission, and nothing gets done in a vacuum, and I'm so grateful for all the community partners that work together to make this vision a reality. And I'm just, I see so many of their faces in the crowd right now, and I'm just very grateful to you because this has been a lot of work, and I'm very excited to see it come to fruition. We should be open next week before Thanksgiving, so please come down, and we're going to have a big celebration on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So please come out and support our new, four new businesses in Buchanan in one space. Just so you guys know, we're going to have a turnover every year. The goal, the reason we're calling it an incubator is to help these businesses grow and then find a permanent place in Buchanan. So after this, we're going to get a whole new group in, and we're really excited. We have McBain Lane Mercantile. That's right up here. We have Chandra, who is opening Goddess of the Moon Leather Works. She'll be doing one-of-a-kind accessories bags, barware. She'll also be doing leather working classes, leather repairs. So if you have your personal leather item, that's your heirloom item you need repaired, she'll take care of that for you, and custom. Then we also have two new food vendors. You may have enjoyed their food at Munchy Mondays. We have Diana's Kitchen. She's going to be doing soul food. And then, of course, Takaria Donchepe, which is a local favorite. You guys blew them out of the water, and we had about 400 people visit them every Monday while they were here, and they knew that Buchanan was the place they needed to be. So thank you for supporting them and bringing them to Buchanan, and I know you'll keep supporting them when they get here. So thank you all for making this happen. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Excited for the opening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Excited to see you there. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving down to public comment on non-agenda items only. If you'd like to speak, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. Because there are so many people, I am going to try and limit people to three minutes.
Good afternoon, evening. I have personally witnessed everyone here, everyone that normally comes to these meetings, make fun of you, Viganski. I'm sick of seeing it. I just watched you do it. I'm not sure if I'll ever go to another frickin' Memorial Day parade.
That's your prerogative.
Well.
That's more than your prerogative.
Oh, my gosh. Do not fire me up. Do not.
Call your commissioner in line. Don't do that, man. You know better.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Danny, you know who that was?
I've never done this before, so this is something new to me.
I don't know.
Gentlemen.
I'm here because I can't get any questions.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the minutes, please?
Oh, Pat Hampel, 705 Main Street in Buchanan. And I'm 72 years old, and I'm a citizen paying bills like everybody else is in town. But this one bill on our water, right here in town, people must notice that I can pay $10.02 for water. I can pay $11.00 for sewer, and that's okay, even with a new sewer plant. I can pay it here. But what is this, $43.50 a month? When we used to pay every three months, we pay every month now. And this, and when I ask at the window, because see now, we got shorted down to a window, where we couldn't ask anybody questions because we get sent to the back of the room. And we're just a moderate person that gets a moderate pay, and that $43.50 means just as much to me a month as it does to Buchanan. And when I ask about it, they said, well, it's separated out, and we give this to that, and this to this one, and this to that. No. And then when they said that they paid some of the workers that did the streets. And then when they said that they paid some of the workers that did the streets, I watched the workers do my street today. And that had to be the most humendous thing I've ever seen in my life. First of all, they gotta have a person come down with a small tractor that costs a fortune and pull the leaves off of your yard into the street. Then that person leaves, and another person comes in, and he rakes the leaves out into the middle of the street. Then here comes this big tractor pulling a stupid thing, making bales. And I ask why they're making bales? And they said, "Because we sell them." Now, who do they sell them bales to that make such big money, that they can pay seven of our workers to come down one street? And then they had to come down it three times today, three different times to get my street cleaned. And then they sent a blower down with a blower. And I'm thinking, all this money and their wages. And it just terrifies me, 'cause I live on next to nothing, and here they come with all this glamorous monstrosity. And, and they, down to the city hall, they've got everything else all stored, where it just took one man behind doing this. No, now they got seven men doing it, so the men don't have to get out and get their hands cold or tired, or their feet cold or tired. And it's, it's a monstrosity. So I just, I really came down because of this forty-three dollars and fifty cents to this city hall. For what? For our, not for my, we work hard for our life and our little money. So why should I give them forty-three dollars and fifty cents for nothing, when my water bill and my sewer bill is only thirty-six dollars? Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna follow that woman. Sean, just wait. I'll wait.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
They're not listening.
He didn't start yet. He didn't start yet.
Okay. Can you, uh, state your name for the minutes?
Okay, I'm Carla Jackson Johnson, and I'm extremely proud to follow the woman who just spoke because she, to me, is what Buchanan is all about. I go door to door, as my father Harold Jackson taught me to do when I was a child. He took me door to door in Buchanan because he was a city commissioner who sat there, and for two decades, he was a justice of the peace and ran people's campaigns. And what he taught me was you listen to the people, and you don't make them come to you. You go out to the people, and you make your staff at the city hall available to the people. And tonight, I wanna talk about what has happened to our city since I've been going out door to door since 2015. Since 2020, the city has had turnover in four city managers, three city clerks, two bookkeepers, and three treasurers. This has caused great expense and instability to a city currently faced with a declining population, buildings and equipment, and water sewer with overdue maintenance, and what she just described, replacement issues, higher fees, utility bills, and taxes. We rival the city of Benton Harbor now in our property tax rate and in our utility costs. We're, we're number two. During the four months that Ben Eldridge has been here as city manager, he has reduced the overtime of employees, which was over the top, brought the department head's debit card down from five thousand limit to five hundred, saving the city in overall spending, implemented clock-in-and-out phone apps to better track employee time and control overtime. He has increased the time limits on city financial CDs to allow for a higher profit margin and no penalty if the city needs to draw money for emergencies. He's helped secure Taco Bell from leaving Buchanan at the last minute. Probably most important, he has united the community by making an effort to speak to individuals who have been upset with the city for a very long time, including downtown merchants, the Northside community, senior citizens, Republicans and Democrats alike. He is inclusive and diverse, a true hands-on city manager.
Ma'am, that's three minutes.
Losing, losing Ben.
Ma'am, that's three minutes.
Is that it? Okay.
Thank you, Carla.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
My name's Ashley Hanson. I live at one five three one zero Main Street. To finish up for Carla, removing the new city manager will cause further financial damage and further damage to the morale of the residents who need stable sales in a storm, not to be tossed back into the water.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Hi, my name's Janine Davy. Um, I just wanna say that, uh, my husband and I moved to Buchanan, uh, from the east side of Michigan, not Chicago, in two thousand sixteen, having owned a cabin here since two thousand fourteen. And we love Buchanan and the surrounding area and the people in it and the small town and all, everything about it. I care about this town, and I've acted as a volunteer in many organizations in it. I am concerned about the fact that Buchanan has had four city managers, three city clerks, two bookkeepers, and three treasurers in just four years. These facts, coupled with bits and pieces I have heard from Buchanan residents and business owners, leads me to logically believe that the city government has some systemic issues that hiring and firing new employees cannot overcome. I question the dismissal of Ben Eldridge as a city commissioner. Did he not want to be complicit with continuing systemic issues? Did he make meaningful changes that disrupted the status quo? I question whether progressive discipline was implemented prior to his proposed dismissal, or did folks just get riled up with changes that he made that they didn't like? We need to identify what is wrong with our city government and fix it. Then I would like to also speak on behalf of a group of citizens and businesses. We, the citizens and volunteers of Buchanan, are very concerned about last Monday's suspension of city manager Ben Eldridge. Our main concerns are the many and substantial red flags that accompany this suspension. First, we would like to see Ben Eldridge reinstated. The citizens of Buchanan are happy with him. If the city staff are not, perhaps they might find a job that would better suit them. In the five years that Mayor Sean Dennison has been a city commissioner, we have transitioned from one city manager to another, and I've already gone through the three treasurers, two bookkeepers, and three city clerks that we've had turnover in. The city has also, though, created three or four new positions in the past five years that didn't exist. But sadly, none of these was a human resources position. The city is probably the largest employer in this town, yet it still does not have a human resources manager. We, as citizens and volunteers of the community, would like accountability for this revolving door and the outrageous spending and use of human resources that accompanies all of these staff issues. Second, in light of the continued turnover of city managers, as well as citizens requesting regarding financial health of the city and its operating budget, it would seem prudent and just logical for the city to conduct a forensic or investigative audit.
Ma'am, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm, uh, Brian Friends. I live at four two two Moccasin. And I wanna start this off with, you're the mayor, right?
Yeah.
We're supposed to lead by your example, right? Why are you the first person to cut people off, just because you don't like what they have to say? Aren't we all here for you?
I'm...
Stop. Aren't we here for you?
I'm running this meeting. I'm in charge of running, read the charter.
Lead by example.
No, you can read the charter, and I'm running the meeting the way it's supposed to be run.
But lead by...
If you'd like to finish your comments, you can, sir.
Can you answer the question that I have, though?
Not right now, sir. No.
Why not?
No, because it's not open forum.
You have three minutes to make a comment.
You have, you have two and a half minutes to finish what you have in front of you.
Sir, read, read it. Now or at the end?
At the end.
Then I will, then I will happily speak then. No, no, he's gonna wanna answer the question.
Monroe LeMay, one eighteen Shimmer Parkway, and I am going to finish Janine Davy's statement. The third concern of this group is the incompetence and the bad decision-making of the city government, starting with the inability of our mayor to lead and guide this community. Commissioners, I'm sorry. Let me repeat that. The inability of the mayor to lead and guide the commissioners in running this city. We ask for Sean Dennison resignation as mayor and city commissioner tonight, as we will pursue a recall, considering that your year is, you've been one, one year, your deadline is tomorrow. We're gonna follow up on Wednesday. It could be a lot easier for you to just step down because you have promised us in the last five years, I voted for you twice, and you have made many promises. I stood behind you. Every time you told me to shut up, I stood behind you, except for this time. And you even had the police chief, who is my boyfriend, show up and tell me to shut up. So enough. Oh, yeah, you didn't know that. The whole fucking town knows it.
Hey, can you exit her out, please? Would someone like to show her the door, please? I ask for, no profanity, and, and I'd like to see her removed, please. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
It's about time it happened.
Going once, going twice. Anyone else wishing to make a public...
Sean, right here, Sean.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Tom Wilson, I think you know my name. I've been here before, four thirteen West Front Street. And you know, when I come here, I don't come here to make accusations, but I do come here to ask questions. So I'm gonna ask a few tonight, and I would like answers to these questions. Number one, we're all here for a reason, and that reason is city management and money. We know the city's broke. We heard that at the last meeting. I hear stories, I hear innuendos that we might go into, uh, receivership by the state by June thirtieth. Uh, I don't know if that's true or not, but you can address that. I don't know what's going on with the city manager. I did look into your laws and bylaws and so forth. I didn't see anything in there that allowed the mayor to fire the city manager. This, the, the city organization that we have here is under the guidance of the city manager. So when you hire him, each person in each department is accountable to your city manager, including the mayor and the council.
No.
No, that's correct.
Okay, so you can address that for me. Yeah, I, I, I think that, uh, you guys, uh, need to consider who you're representing. And I, I made this comment way back when you approved all the marijuana businesses and so forth, and the people were protesting. And I'm, I'm asking you again, who are you representing? These people had confidence in you when they voted you in here, and I see that confidence waning rapidly. I'd like to see some changes, our city administration, whether you guys are here or whether somebody replaces you, um, because there are a lot of people here tonight that would like to replace you. So think about what you're doing. Think about the people that you represent here. Think about the people that are paying these taxes and the amount of money that you're being, that's being spent on a disposal plant. I, I would also like to know if your plan is still on the books for the five-story high-rise that was, uh, presented at one time with the city renovation, the street renovation and so forth. And I've heard that the, uh, plan would be to put it on the commons. So, quote, they can see McCoy Creek and the Pears Mill. Um, there are many other properties around town that I think would serve that purpose much better, including the one out on the edge of town where they tore down the old hotel, or another property just across the road from it that's available, that would give a better view of the river. I have also heard that, uh, a lot of this is being done to draw in Chicago trade. If you put up this five-story building, who's gonna pay for that? The taxpayers can't afford it.
It's three minutes, sir.
It's three minutes, Tom.
It's three minutes.
What?
It's been three minutes, sir.
That's your three minutes.
I'll do my best to answer all your concerns.
Thanks, Tom.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
So my name is Tom Jolly, one oh seven one twenty-two East Front. You know, I, I know that, uh, some mention was made about, um, our group, and approximately twenty-five to thirty of us got together to discuss this whole situation. We were all the way politically from left to right. There was not one person that was disrespectful in that group. As I reflect on Sean, what you've done, it's morally corrupt, it's ethically corrupt, and I would have to question legally, where are we? So you failed us on all of that. I think this is a good time for you to step down, as I'm sure, how about a raise of hands of who would like to see Sean step down? Anyway, I, I think the legal end of it, you know, when I hear all these people that we've blown through, and every time we blow through another one, we have to hire another headhunter. Now this one, because the mayor did it, which it, I, I'm sure we have a lawsuit on our hands, and we're going to have to pay another headhunter. So as mayor, is that good management of money? When we, I've been here for eighteen years. This is the first city manager that has stepped through my door and actually had a concern, how are we doing? And I've not seen that out of any of you. Well, Dan, no, you have, but, uh, the rest of you, no. But I'm sure about thirty minutes are up.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
My name's, uh, Jeremy Fram from two oh six Main Street. First off, I guess I'd like to thank Mike Baker and all his hard work over the last twenty years. I've personally seen him in our town, covered in mud in a hole when we've had issues, and his team down there. And I think, uh, there's a lot of things that go unnoticed with his hard work and, and his team. Second, I came down here for some clarity on what... I came down here for some clarity on what the issues were at hand, because I wasn't here the last time. But I know most of you in this room, or a lot of you, and I know Sean as well. And personally, as a human being, it's a lot easier to be a backseat driver in some of these decisions, but I would hate to see you step down. And I would hope you'd stay on our commission and keep working as hard as you can, because I see you at all the events. You're out there, you actually, you call me sometimes about how my company's actually doing. You care about our community. So until I find out a little bit more about what's going on, I hope you stay.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move down to executive comments. Commissioner Wheaton?
Well, first and foremost, thank you, everybody, for showing up. It signifies an importance to everything that we talked about tonight. Regardless of what side of the fence you're on, everything you said has importance. And if anybody doesn't believe that, then you're in the wrong room. Every single thing you said has importance. And we need to hear it, and we want to hear it. Because together, that's what makes us all better. You may be upset, good. What is it you're upset about? You're upset, what is it upset, you're upset about? This is the significance of why we're in this community. And that's what's been lost, is that we have a definitive problem where we don't get together and ask questions from each other and how we can make things better together collectively. The things that have transpired recently, and I understand that people are upset, and you have every right to be. You want to know the answers. I want to know the answers. I sit on the commission, and I ask questions, and I want to know the answer. We have to have decorum. We have to, we have a responsibility to protect the rights of all citizens. That's including the staff that works in this building, the city manager who runs this city, and every city commissioner that works up here. And what I ask of you is that when you ask the questions, understand that there's certain things that we cannot say. It's no different than the corporations and the businesses that you work for, and I would beg you to go and talk to your HR department. And I guarantee there is things, even in a managerial position, when it becomes a legal matter, they absolutely unequivocally cannot tell you. Even if you are interested, are just inquiring about where that money's going and why they're spending that with the lawyers that are in that building. Understand that there is certain things that happen from a legal perspective that cannot be discussed. And if you personally cannot understand that that is something that is important, then I beg you to put everything that you have in your life out there on the table for the citizens to question when it becomes a legal matter. Everything has to be handled with consistency within the spectrum of that understanding. Now, I want to know what's going on, just as much as you do. I want to answer the questions with logic and reason, and not give you hyperbole about what I believe personally. I want you to understand that what we're dealing with is not easy. What you're asking may not be able to be answered. It doesn't mean that we're not being transparent. It doesn't mean that we're being unjust. It doesn't mean we're trying to run you down the Primrose path. It just means at the current time that we're dealing with things we're not able to say what we need to say. In due time, things will come out, right, wrong, or indifferent. Doesn't matter which side is right or wrong, you're going to get your answers. You may not like what happens, but you're going to get an answer. And I beg of you to be patient. We understand that we're dealing with a lot of difficulties. Money is not going where it could have gone because of some of the changes that have happened and that was mentioned tonight. But I can promise you that every commissioner on this board is dealing with 30 years of malfeasance when it comes to the financial direction that some of this money was spent. We dealt with the Northside neighbors, who gave us great insight into how things were not happening in that community. And I guarantee if any of them were to step up tonight, they felt like they were finally listened to, and they rightfully should have been. So I ask you, be patient, and be diligent in your understanding that we are community members in this community as well, and we're just as frustrated as you are with so many years of money not being spent correctly.
Thank you. Commissioner Swen?
Well, thank you, everybody. Probably going to hear a lot of the same comments from each of us. But I'll hit that piece in a minute. I want to answer some of the questions that came up to the podium today. And I didn't get her name, but she was asking about what was the ready-serve fee on your water bill. Ready-serve was instituted, I'm sure there's Mr. Brown is hiding in this room somewhere could tell you the exact date, but I believe it was implemented in the early 90s by my cues. It was the right thing to do. It's what you're paying for the future capital needed to replace your water and sewer pipes, a fund that was severely in the hole, essentially. Water sewer can only run on enterprise dollars. What that means is, what it costs to run it is what we have to charge. And capital planning, which you've heard at least in the three years that I've been here with these gentlemen, us talk about as something we majorly need in this community. So that ready-serve fee is a calculated fee on how much it's going to cost us to continue to replace pipes in the water. That is not paid through your property taxes. So I hope that, there's much wider spectrum on what that fee really is, but that gets down to the dirty on what it is and why we have it there. And it's been there. It's been there since when I was a little kid. So it's not something new that you just started paying. It's been there, and it's increased like any other rate that we've all had to incur. Talk about a forensic audit. I encourage you to go through the multiple audits we've had every single year by multiple different firms now. Plant Moran, one of the most respected accounting firms in the state, reviews our financial statements in the past. And in the last two audits, we've now used Krugel Lawton. And because we were in between treasurers at the time, due to inability to complete the jobs, that was done by another accounting firm sadly, that cost us a lot of money. But those were done by third-party groups, so your tax dollars are accounted for, every red cent of it. And every one of those expenses is in your agenda every month. So if you really want to go through it and be forensic, you'll get the same exact information this commission does, not anything different. Comment of four city managers, I think Bill Marks was here for over 15 years prior to Heather's time. So, I mean, we're talking a 30-year span we had four city managers, not a four-year span. And one of those was an interim city manager, who made it very clear when we hired him and brought him in that he was only going to be here for the limited amount of time necessary for us to replace him. It was never a long-term solution. So in reality, yeah, we had two city managers, and we had to let one go. And everybody here reads the leader, I know it because they keep publishing all of our information, and they publish her review. And you need to go back to that story, or you can look at it online, and you can see the exact reason why we made that change. And I think you'll support us in that effort, not to dwell on that. Tonight was the first night I heard of a five-story high-rise. I can tell you that is unequivocally not true. We have zero desire to do that. We are not property developers in this town. That is absolutely not true. So you can let everybody and all your constituents know that is never going to happen. I think you're referring to probably some of the hopes and dreams within the Andrews Plan, which encompass some ideas for private development that could happen. But that is not something that we are focusing on. It is so far away from what we're trying to accomplish. You heard it here first, I guess. It's not happening. And then when it comes to your taxes, multiple times, we've posted it, I'm sure I saw it flying around tonight. There's a pie chart, you can see exactly where every one of your pennies go. Yeah, this town cares about a lot of the different services around, and we vote yes on a lot of things, and you'll see that in the pie chart. A lot of your tax dollars leave the City of Buchanan because of initiatives we vote on, like Lake Michigan College, to support students and give higher education opportunities. And that's just a small piece of that pie. But there's a lot of great things this community supports, which means dollars do leave, but hopefully they come back in some capacity because of that investment. And finally, the city manager. The city manager is not fired, as Mark went through. We have not even had a chance to talk as a commission yet. This news was on Facebook within minutes of the city manager being suspended. Tonight would have been the first night this group of gentlemen would have had a chance to sit down and hear the truth. Unfortunately, all of that data hasn't been collected. Do I know what that data is? I can tell you firsthand, I don't know what data's missing yet, because we haven't had the chance to get it. So I appreciate the passion and the energy in this community to want to step up and make sure we're doing the right thing, and supporting a city manager. And I think the best way we can support the city manager and the staff here is to follow due process and listen to both sides, like you would want if you were in a situation that we're facing. So nobody's guilty of anything yet. If anything, we're guilty of listening too much. I think that's what you'd want us to do, is make sure we're making the right decision up here. And caring, and leading, and not jumping to quick reactions because somebody may be upset about something. There's probably truth to some of the comments that have been made. The chance, the opportunity for us to absorb that, take it in, and not make a quick decision for the long-term strength of this community hasn't even been afforded to us yet. We were going to have our first closed session to hear the truth tonight. Unfortunately, that didn't get the chance to happen. And more than likely, we'll probably have to call a special meeting, which you'll get a chance to be at. But again, that doesn't mean you're going to get the details until we've had a chance to absorb it. So even if we don't make a decision that night, and I don't know if we will or won't, you got to allow us the time to process it, because this is an important decision to every single person in this room, every small business owner, every household owner. Give us a chance to make the right decision. And we don't have that information yet. Not any single man up here has it yet, because we haven't been given it. So I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, it's really important. And again, not just because we're here on a hot topic issue. I hope you embrace some of the organizations that were in this room tonight, and support them with the same passion that you came in tonight to support Ben. Thank you, and I appreciate you as a community.
Commissioner Biansky?
Well, I'm going to pretend like I'm Paul Harvey for a moment, and some of you might be too young, but here's the rest of the story. This lawyer that recommended suspending gets paid $10,000 a month from the City of Buchanan, and that's where some of your tax dollars are going. He's been getting paid $10,000 a month for at least the last 16 months. Some of your other money went towards all them treasurers and the bookkeepers that we'd had in previous, and we had to sort it out, because we didn't, we hired people that were not competent. That cost us $20,000 a month for at least 18 months. We hired a city manager that had already sued the previous city she was working for, but we hired her. We gave her $47,000 to go away, when we could have gave her 17. So that's some of the rest of the facts, you know? And as far as me releasing anything confident, I did not release anything confidential. What I gave to the city manager is what this commission was going to railroad him out with. And that's exactly what they planned to do. And that was straight from your mayor's mouth. He was going to fire the city manager, period. And now, this week has been awful. And the thing about it is, I came in here to a meeting at 7 o'clock Monday morning, City, Water, and Sewer. And I got called into the back office by the mayor and said, "We suspended the city manager, and it's your fault. I'm not going to repeat what I said, because he can't throw me out." But it wasn't polite, and it was meant to not be polite. I am tired of being the kicking bag down here, because I ask questions. They ask questions, but they're very pointed in what the questions they are they ask and who they ask. I ask everybody the same questions, just like Michael Rowland tonight. I was not stepping on him at all. I was asking the questions that should be asked of everybody that steps up to that podium. And besides that, I go to the Infusion Center every week. That's where I was at for the two hours that all of this garbage was going on in Facebook. So that really burns, and I'd like to make a motion to reinstate our city manager, Ben Eldridge, immediately. I would like a second.
Is there a motion on the floor? There's a motion on the floor. Is there a support?
You could at least second it and vote.
Hearing none, the motion dies. You done with the comments?
I'm all done with comments.
Commissioner Money?
All right, well, I want to start out by congratulating Mr. Baker over there for 20 years of service to the City of Buchanan. That's pretty commendable, as far as I'm concerned. I want to thank Jerry Flinner for all the hard work that he does on that trail, because I've been down there, I've seen what they do, and I've used the trail. I will apologize for my little outburst over here with whomever that fellow was. I guess when you go to start attacking me, that's one thing. But when you attack an organization that so many people work hard to do, you know, for this city, then yeah, I get a little upset. And so I made my comment, you know, I didn't know what a Memorial Day parade had to do with anything within Buchanan. But like I said, I made the outbursts, I apologized for my mistake. Everything that I actually was going to say has already been covered, probably more eloquently than I could do it, because I just, not the eloquent speaker. But I did, do want to say that a lot of the stuff that's been thrown out there has been taken out of context. They, I know there's been special little meetings in different little places, and people within our community have got together, and, you know, they want to try to put the commission down, they want to try to put the staff down, they want to try to put, I don't know, maybe the police department down, fire department. That's all fine and dandy. But I don't see anybody in this room jumping up to take a position up here, maybe one or two people. And like I said, these seats are open. Next year at this time, there's a couple openings here, you know? Put your banners out there on the sidewalks, and you come up here and sit, and you take the heat from a lot of the folks that are in this room. Because, you know, I've been, I've been in this town for a good number of years, and I've seen the good and the bad. So with that being said, I do have one thing on a little bit better note. We have put together, we had put together a little committee that was organized through our cemetery, Oak Ridge Cemetery Committee Meeting. And it was brought up here a couple weeks ago, or a couple months ago, by Norma Ferris, that our group was looking into quite possibly getting a hold of Michigan State University and getting the old hand pump fire truck, or hand pump fire truck that's been stored up in Michigan City since the early 50s. It's a 1893, 1863. It's a 1863 hand pumper fire truck. We organized a committee, where's my gentleman at? We organized a committee that consisted of Peter Leacy, myself, Mary Lister, Bobby Blalock from the local fire department, Joe Scanlon. And we had our little meeting the other day to discuss the possibilities of getting that, that piece of equipment, along with the old hose reel, back into the City of Buchanan. Found out today that Michigan State University will be giving us that old hand pump, the hose reel. The only thing that we are going to have to do is provide some kind of transportation to East Lansing to pick it up. Where's he at? I've already started that process. I'm going to talk to Mr. Wheaton down there, who's going to help me get that, get that fire unit back here in town, and hopefully we'll be able to get it on display. Or, as we talked about in our committee, maybe putting it at some other facility right now till we can get a facility that would house it, where it would be, you know, climatically controlled and those kind of things. So as I usually always say, I want to thank this group of guys for everything they do. Yeah, we have the outbursts and everything else, but we all try to work together. We try to work the best we can for you folks. So thank you for being here. And thank you for ABC 57 News for being here.
Okay, I'm going to try, can everyone hear me okay in the back? I want to make sure all of you can hear what I'm about to say. So... Are you done? I'm going to try and address every concern that I heard tonight. And it's going to take a minute, so please bear with me. But I want to make sure that I'm thorough. At this time, I will not be commenting on current legal employment contract matters. And I want all of you to understand something, so please listen carefully. Saying that I will not discuss ongoing legal matters does not mean that I have something to hide or that I'm not being transparent. It means that I'm allowing for due process to take place, and that we're... It means that I'm allowing for due process to take place and that we're still investigating facts. Speaking publicly or making judgments prior to knowing the facts is neither intelligent or decent. It can put at risk people's character, people's reputations, people's marriages, people's ability to provide for their family. It is reckless, unfair, and completely unprofessional. Your larger concern should be that one of your elected city commissioners has violated his oath of office, has hindered the conducting of city business, and has shared confidential information. Many of you have heard through social media that the city is facing state takeover due to bad financial decisions, corruption, or some form of financial impropriety. I'm here to tell you tonight as mayor, the City of Buchanan has not been contacted by the state concerning any such thing. That story is misinformation and unequivocally untrue. It's not true. Now, since I have a full house, and you're obviously concerned about the financial well-being of the city, I'd like to update you on where the city stands on a few things and how our financial future is a challenging one. I printed these out tonight. I left them back on the table by the agenda. Hopefully you have one. The city collects property taxes to help pay for city operations. But mu- much of what you pay as a taxpayer does not stay here in the city. So as you can see, the orange part of this pie is what the city keeps. Only roughly thirty-five percent of the property taxes collected from you go towards city operations. A little over one-third. The city will collect one point six nine million dollars for itself this year. In comparison, you'll pay one point three seven million dollars for the combination of the state education tax and our schools' operating budget. I don't say that to shame the schools in any way, but to try and make clear how little the entire city is actually generating in property tax revenue. In the past, there were ways the state helped to provide revenue to our community. One of those ways was by the ways of something called revenue sharing. These funds came from sales taxes, and they were relied on by small municipalities like ours to be able to do things like pave roads, make infrastructure repairs, and things of that nature. In nineteen ninety-six, reductions in revenue-sharing allocations were made by the legislature, meaning they started sharing less money with communities like ours. In twenty-eleven, the governor then reduced revenue-sharing again by another thirty-three percent. And from two thousand one to twenty-eighteen, there's been a shortfall in allocations to cities, villages, and counties of eight point six billion dollars. This is a significant loss of revenue that the city used for infrastructure repair and maintenance. But that's very important to remember. At the same time that Lansing has reduced allocations of funding, they've mandated certain things. Meaning they've said, "We're making a rule. You have to do this. You have to fund it, and if you don't, we'll penalize you." For instance, lead service lines for water. Lansing has mandated that we're responsible for changing out every lead service line in our water system. There are hundreds of them. The lead service line is the part of the water pipe that goes from the main going down the street to every home. So we have to include in our budget every year, digging up and replacing these lines at the city's expense. This is just one example of mandates the state has sent down. But put that on top of reduced revenue sharing, and things start getting serious. When Clark shut down in the nineteen eighties, this town was devastated. I think we all know that. For whatever reason, since the nineteen eighties, planning for future upgrades, making necessary updates, and maintaining our infrastructure has been neglected. All of our buildings, water and sewer pipes, everything, are old. They're in disrepair. Look at the wall of our city hall. There are a great deal of things that need replaced. Some of our existing pipes in the downtown are a hundred years old. They had a fifty-to-seventy-year lifespan when they were installed, meaning they should have been replaced thirty years ago. In twenty-eighteen, we received a grant called a SAW grant, and its purpose was to inspect our water and sewer infrastructure to see what maintenance was needed. It sent cameras throughout our entire city's water and sewer pipes. After the engineers studied their findings, we were told that to do the work needed to be done throughout the city, the cost would be seventy million dollars. We've whittled that work down to focus on the absolute most critical part of our system. And that is what the downtown infrastructure project that you've heard about is all about, and I will come back to that. Just a few short years ago, the city invested in a new state-of-the-art oxidation ditch, commonly referred to as our wastewater plant. The cost for that was nine million dollars. Obviously, we didn't have and don't have that kind of money. So we have to borrow money through bonds to pay for a project like that. This year, our bond payment for the oxidation ditch is somewhere in the area of two hundred and forty thousand. I think it's actually two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Because of the way the repayment is structured, our payments continue to get higher every year. In seven to ten years, our payments for the oxidation ditch will balloon to eight hundred thousand dollars per year. At the same time, we recently started on a new replacement DPW building to house the millions of dollars' worth of equipment used by the city to maintain our streets and roads. That entire project is in the neighborhood of five million. Same story. We have to borrow the money to pay for it, and then we have to make payments every year to repay the loan. Now we're planning for the downtown infrastructure project. We've asked the designers and the engineers of that project multiple times to remove things, to redesign things, and to try to reduce the cost of the project. Because with the current economic environment and the sharp rise in labor and construction material costs, that project cost has risen by thirty percent just in the last two to three years. So what was a nine-million-dollar project is now a twelve-million-dollar project. And every day that goes by, the price goes up. Not making those necessary repairs is not an option. It's vital to keep our drinking water safe and to ensure your ability to flush your toilets, do laundry, and take showers. The other thing I hear frequently is questions concerning marijuana revenues and why that money can't be used to fix our streets, update our parks, make infrastructure improvements, et cetera. The honest answer is, we don't earn enough marijuana excise tax revenue to have an immediate impact on one project. Because the cost of park equipment, because of the cost of construction materials and labor, it takes a few years of earning those revenues to be able to save enough money to do a project. We've only received those funds for two or three years now. The first year's revenue was very small, because all the dispensaries were not operating. And the third year's revenues were smaller than the previous years, because as usual, Lansing took their share first and decided they want more of it. I beg you, if you're as frustrated as I am, if you want to see Buchanan be the best it can be, call your county commissioner, call your state representative, call your state senator, call the governor. Tell your state legislators to reinstate revenue sharing. Tell them to pass legislation that would allow our local unit of government to add a one percent tax to retail marijuana sales. Tell your county commissioners to spend the money that they receive for marijuana excise tax in the communities that are actually enabling them to receive those funds. We've been searching for ways to find other sources of revenue without raising taxes. And this commission has implemented policy aimed at reducing costs and finding new ways to do things. And we've even suspended some events like Thrill on the Hill. But we also need to continue looking to the future and planning for other upgrades and repairs, not only to ensure we keep the city operating efficiently, but to also invest in expanding our quality-of-life initiatives, like the pavilion at Victory Park, the McCoy Creek Trail Expansion, the River Access, and other endeavors. On top of all of that, we understand the importance of keeping Buchanan affordable enough for people to live here. I hope you can understand, given what I just told you, it's a difficult job. Over the past week, I'm sad to say, I've received some emails that were on the verge of threatening, but mostly harassing. And that's fine. They accused this commission and myself of corruption and unethical behavior, and they made one thing very clear to me, just how uninformed a large portion of our community is, and how much they've not been paying attention. Since taking office, I've worked very hard to remove the Good Old Boy Network stigma from city hall. This commission has made it clear that we want to provide an environment of trust, transparency, and teamwork. And we're so committed to doing that, that we implemented an ethics ordinance requiring the highest ethical standards for city employees, administration, and staff. The only Good Old Boy Network is the network of people, and it's always the same people who are continuously pitching in and showing up to help the community grow. The Jerry Fleners, the Randy Hendricksons, the Tracy Dippos, the Ralph McDonalds, the Peter Leacy's, and a long list of other dedicated volunteers. You can be a part of that network. Pitch in. Show up. The people who work for this city are good people, doing good work, all of them. They do not deserve to be publicly disgraced by way of social media or any other means. And if you participated in spreading misinformation and making accusations based on hearsay, you should be ashamed of yourself. I know I speak for my fellow commissioners when I say, "This is your city hall. It is here for you, doing work for you." There are no secrets. We have open books, and we are currently working to be able to give our citizens access to city financials online. If you have questions concerning something you don't understand, please reach out. I'll do my best to explain it, or I'll find someone who can. Now, I know there's been a lot of questions about where I got my authority to suspend employees, and actually, section four point six of the charter states that the mayor exercises such powers as the state laws, charter, or commission may confer. It also states that the mayor shall be recognized as the head of the city. State law, specifically the Home Rules Cities Act at MCL one seventeen three A, requires that each city charter shall provide for the election of a mayor, who shall be the chief executive officer of the city. As chief executive of a city, a mayor has the authority to suspend employees. See Bennett versus Detroit Police Chief from two thousand seven. Buchanan's charter does not limit the mayor from taking an executive action to implement an employee suspension with pay, which is not an adverse employment action, when action is needed immediately to protect all the parties involved in a workplace dispute, pending investigation, and resolution. I know everyone wants answers. I get it. And I get that you're passionate and that you're tired of seeing high-tax bills and little to show for it. Me too. I paid six thousand dollars in property taxes last year. I'm sure some of you have paid the same. I mean, they're high. But the city as an operating unit is working with a very small budget to do everything we can do. And we'll continue to do that. And as soon as we're able to speak on the city manager's situation, we will. But we can't currently. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Sean, I'll make said motion.
Thank you.
Money, I'll support.
Thank you. Gabriel, please.
Bielski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
Denison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Your turn.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian. Hey, Brian.
You're very welcome.
I'll tell you. So, when you want to talk?
When you're gonna have your closed session meeting?
That was your case, so how it works?
When you're gonna have your closed session meeting?